Welcome everyone to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session on Thursday, October 7, 2021. The time is now 5:31. We apologize for being late. We were just sort of wrapping up an executive session. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/Clark for more information. First item on the agenda is the call to the audience for issue review session items. Speakers will have up to three minutes to address the council. Madam Clerk, were there any speaker or comment cards received from the public or wishing to comment on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, there was one card received for Item 2A, Constituent Response and Tracking.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and take that public comment.
Okay. It was submitted by Kenneth A. Muschett, and he's a resident of the Maple Ash Neighborhood on Mill Avenue. And his comments read, "My emails and public meeting comments for the Mill Avenue Landscape Improvements Project Virtual Meeting, September 27, 2021, have not been responded to or incorporated, so I would like your support to include the Gabian Wall to the 12th Street Mill Project and add the following language to the City of Tempe website. My comments through Tempe 311 have also been ignored, so I would like your support in using this forum to communicate. Please add a page on the City of Tempe website to recognize the biodiversity sustainability project at 12th Street and Mill Avenue. Please add the following description from the Maple Ash Neighborhood Association, our manna 10/321. Please also include the minimum 125-foot native rock Gabian wall that was recommended for the website. The Tempe Native Sustainability Inspiration Site at 12th Street and Mill Avenue serves to demonstrate the resilience and biodiversity of the area. The four large boulders on the site honor the strength of the four southern tribes. Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. Anthropological studies document large and advanced ancestral Oodham settlements located throughout the entirety of present-day Tempe and recognize the ancestral lands of the Oodham known as the Pima, Pai Pash known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors as extending far beyond our community. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oodham of the Salt River Pima-Maricopek Indian Community and Gila River Indian Community. There are 20 native trees on the site that are represented. On one of the prominent trees is the Palo Verde Arizona State Tree, meaning green stick. Arizona's 15 counties and the four southern tribes are recognized with the additional 19 trees distributed across the site's landscape. Four Arizona counties, Pinell, Graham, Santa Cruz, and Gila have been named to reflect features of Arizona's native landscape, Pinell Peak, Mount Graham, the Santa Cruz River, and Gila River. This site has three neighbors which are all across the street in separate directions. The site is on Mill Avenue, just east of the fabulous Tempe Historic Maple Ash Neighborhood. Just east of the site is the iconic Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Gammage Auditorium on the Arizona State University campus. Just south of the site is Tempe Burchett Park, which serves as a lasting memory of the many contributions made by the Burchett family in Tempe." And there's a couple, there's three more, a couple more sentences left. And in the interest of time, did you want me to continue, Mr. Mayor? Or, because I know everyone, all the mayor, the mayor and city council had received this, and it's part of the meeting record.
Sure, Kara, if there's only a couple more sentences, I feel free to finish.
Okay. "The sustainable solar tree lighting on the site creates a peaceful and relaxing ambiance in the evening for visitors enjoying a drive on Mill Avenue, a night of entertainment at Gammage Auditorium, or a stroll on the beautiful Maple Ashes Mill Avenue. There is a beautiful Arizona native stack stone Gabian wall on the southeast leg of this triangular site. Rock-filled Gabians are landscaping features that are designed to be flexible structures which can withstand significant movements from undercutting or landslide. The stone in the Gabian wall is from the Salt River, which is a mile north of the site. The river got its name because it flows over large salt deposits shortly after the merging of the white and black rivers. There is a lone saguaro cactus on the site. In the spring, this saguaro cactus blooms, the official state flower of Arizona. Native people use every part of the cactus for tools and food. Desert animals such as birds and javelina have also enjoyed the street red fruit. Green storm water infrastructure is collected and distributed to the trees, shrubs, and cactus on this extreme heat landscape demonstration site. Thank you, and that concludes the comments."
Thank you so much, Kara. And I believe that Dr. Braden K., our Sustainability Director, is following up with that residence. So I just wanted to let council be aware of that, but we appreciate them sending in comments for the council. Let me, so there are no more cards. Let me go next to Item 2A, the Issue Review Session Items. 2A is Constituent Response and Tracking, Council Communicator and Email Management. And for that, I'm going to go ahead and call up our Chief of Staff, Keely Varvel-Hartzel, and Alex Chin, our council aide.
Hey, can you guys see me? Sorry. Hi.
Sure can.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for having us present today. When I first started, wait a minute, let's get the PowerPoint up. I know Alex is working on that. Sorry about that. There we go.
Okay.
Okay. So when I first started in this position a few months ago, one of the issues nearly all council members and staff raised with me proactively was issues with the council communicator system. It was clear that a system and process more suited to the large number of emails to receive and need to track was needed. The challenges of the current system raised varied somewhat in your role and perspective.
He has a basket, he has no socks.
But...
Kestmer Var, I think you're not muted.
So the challenges raised of the current system sort of varied depending upon who I was talking to, but they included some common issues. First, emails arrive via the Outlook inbox system. So this creates email management issues for a lot of people. There's a flooding house which at times can seem overwhelming. It can also make it hard to find other emails in between the council communicator emails that you're receiving. Also, staff throughout the city receive every email. This does keep everyone alerted to trending issues, but it also results in a lot of people who have no direct responsibility for acting on any of these emails getting every email in their inbox. Having these issues arrive as an Outlook email means that we also have no standardized data or information that's provided to us. All we have is an email address and whatever information the sender volunteers to include to us in that email text. Frequently, we don't know the sender's name or phone number, or even if they're a Tempe resident. Oftentimes, we need more information in order to address the constituents' concern, and it would be helpful to have that contact information in the initial communication versus having to go back and forth with them to get it. As a manager, I quickly realized that a shortcoming of this Outlook email-based system also is that there's no way to easily track the response status. The only way to know if an email has been responded to is by going email by email and checking for a response. With this kind of a setup, emails are bound to fall through the cracks. There also is no way to track if the email was referred to someone else for action. For example, if the email was forwarded to staff at, say, community development, or when it was referred. Let's go to the next slide. So more challenges of the current system are that the emails are not easily searchable by category such as name or topic. For example, a woman testified at the last council meeting that she had sent three council communicator emails about an issue. Though she gave her name at the meeting, we might not even be able to find those emails if we didn't know what her email address was, because we couldn't just search by her name. Another challenge is that there's no reporting capability. Reporters asked us recently how many emails we'd received about a popular event being canceled, and Alex had to count them by hand, looking at each email subject line and even the text sometimes to make sure he knew what that email was about before including it in the total. Another challenge is that there is also no ability to easily send a proactive email to a group of people that have contacted the council about an issue, or even a mass response with standardized text. When we received a bunch of emails a couple months ago about the live music issue in downtown Tempe, staff literally had to cut and paste text into each individual email to respond. So after quickly realizing what challenges the current system presented, I also learned through research that there is a project underway to acquire a customer relationship management system, or a CRM system, for the city, which is designed to more easily handle these types of public contact needs. That project was funded in the CIP, but it will likely be at least two years before that system is developed and running. But through the ingenuity of Alex Chin and Ken, sorry, Kim Moncanyo, the director of our 311 system, we realized that we actually have a tool already available to us that would help a lot. We've worked with Mark Wittenberg, Adam Berkowitz, and Lisa Johnson in IT to tweak the databasing system we already use for the 311 system through a software called Asella to potentially give us a more workable tool for the interim while we wait for the development of the more sophisticated CRM system to be developed. Specifically, using this approach would turn the council communicator email into a work order-style communication, and it would collect more information upfront from the sender. We then would use the existing 311 database we now use to store and monitor the work orders that we collect both from the 311 phone system as well as emails to 311 to store and manage the information and requests so that we receive through the council communicator system. We have some screenshots of what this new system would look like if we were to move the council communicator system to the 311 Asella platform, and I'm going to ask Alex Chin to review those with you now. Alex?
Thank you, Keely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Alex Chin, council aide on the mayor and council staff. I'll be guiding you through some screenshots of what we have been working on. What you see here is the public-facing webpage for council communicators. As Keely stated, while we are utilizing the Asella Tempe 311 Work Order System, we have streamlined the process for council communicators specifically. When constituents navigate to this page, the Asella system auto-selects the council communicator work order type rather than going through a series of menu options. Using the Asella Work Order System will allow city staff to track and follow up with constituents more effectively. Here is the Asella dashboard on the internal side. This dashboard provides an overall glance of communicators that we have received. This dashboard is customizable to the user. This dashboard also allows staffers to filter and search more effectively. Here is a detailed council communicator work order. Each work order contains the constituent's first and last name, email, phone number, city-state, and a description of what the communicator is regarding. City staff will enter related subjects into the work order. As communicators are utilizing this system, we will build a master list of keyword searches. A bonus in utilizing the Asella system is the ability to generate reports. These reports are customizable. If there is a particular subject, a date range, or location, we can easily generate that report. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to present this evening. This is the end of my portion. I will pass it back to Keely.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. So again, kudos to Alex and Kim for coming up with this idea and helping IT to work through how it can be used to meet council communicators' needs. There will, of course, be a few challenges with this new approach. Like with any change in business processes, change itself is sometimes hard to get used to. The first challenge is that the new work order format will look different to residents that regularly use the council communicator, I'm sorry, council communicator system, like the woman who spoke last week. So if we go to the next slide, they will now see, we need next slide, Alex, sorry. Thank you. They will now see a link on the webpage that says, "Click here to send a council communicator," just like they do now, but instead of it creating an actual email, it will create this work order page. So it will look different to people who are familiar with our system and are used to just clicking on it and it creating an email for them. It will require them to now go through a menu of requested data, which they don't have to do now. So Slide 11, the other challenge is ourselves having to adjust to this change. Staff and elected officials would now have to proactively log into the 311 system to view the council communicator emails. This is not difficult, and we can give everyone login access. A 15-minute training is all you need to learn how to find whatever you're looking for, and council aides already have access and use the system to find 311 system, 311 issue, so they're familiar with it. Another way we can make this easier for everyone is to adapt, to adapt to is to provide weekly reports, like the one pictured here. We can do that in electronic or hard copy detailing all the emails received that week, so you can review that instead of having to log into the system. But though there will be some new things to get used to, we believe that the opportunities outweigh the challenges. Specifically, this system provides a lot more accountability. We will be able to track emails received, referrals made, and responses sent by date. So if someone wants to know how many emails we've received per month, say, it would be very easy to find out. And the number of emails that have not yet been responded to, and how old are they? That also would be easy to see, too. Another benefit is that we will now have research capabilities. So if someone sends us an email and we want to see what other topics they've emailed us on in the past, we could easily do that. And we will be able to track trends. We could produce reports and by numerous categories. As you can see here, we can search by who the issue's been assigned to, what date it was created, what date it was completed, the subject, and of course, by name and contact information of the individual. Having all this additional consistent information about the people who contact us gives us a lot of ability to do proactive communication, too. We have name, email address, and a record of issues that they care about. Sorry, we're back on 15, actually. That's fine. I just wanted to show that there was these fields that we could, we'd be collecting about everybody. Thank you. Slide 16. The system will allow us to more easily do mass emails to constituents as well. We could now just merge a standardized response to every person that contacted us on the live music issue with one quick action. It would not be individual emails, cutting and pasting the text in. And this system would also allow us to proactively communicate with constituents. We could pull the names and emails of everyone that contacted the city about an issue like homelessness, and then proactively tell them about new developments or positive things the city is doing in that area. So with that, we would request approval to move the council communicator system over to the 311 Asella software platform so that we can be more accountable, proactive, and efficient. Alex and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Keely. Thank you so much, Alex, as well. I'm going to look to the council now for any comments or questions. Okay, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Keely, you have a question. With this process, when you respond to lots of emails, you said you were going to be responding to residents. You know, if we find out, I know like some of them were upset with the council was canceled, and we responded to those immediately. And then when we had any more updated information, and if you were going to send it updated information to a big group of people, will we get those emails then in our email box, the addition, or will that be something separate?
We would have to, Councilmember Garland, excuse me. We would have to proactively send you a copy of it. I don't know if you noticed, but that's basically what Alex did before. He sent you an email directly that said, hey, everybody, this is the text I'm sending out to everybody. And then you got that, and then he went ahead and sent it out to all of the folks that had emailed us directly. So you weren't actually CC'd on that specific email. You just got it separately, because there were so many. But we would certainly work out a way to make sure, especially something like that, that we could make, you know, send you the text so that you would have that for your records and know what it was people were receiving as a response.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Cubey.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor? Because I'm on my phone, I'm having problems with technology tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, council member.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a question about how this would transition. And I want to say thank you, Keely, because, as you know, this has been something I've been advocating for for three years. And I'm also very mindful that we don't want to have less connectivity with the residents. And so a couple of questions I have is how would this transition? Like people that, would the council communicator email just immediately send a referral to someone that says, please fill in this, go to this form?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cubey, it would look the same on the website to the residents. So they'd go to the website, and if you look at it, it says, "If you want to communicate directly with the council, click here at a link." And instead of that link creating an email box that you fill in, it would pull this work order up, and the work order would ask you for some specific background questions about your contact information, and then have a box that you would fill in, your email text as if, right? And then that would automatically go to whatever council aide is staffing the council communicator that, that month. So it would have the same immediate, you know, response, or immediate receipt. And yeah.
No, no, I understand that. What if someone not knowing, not, there are a lot of people that don't go to the email. Sorry, don't go to the website. They just know to type in councilcommunicator.Tempe.gov. So what will happen to those folks?
I think in the mean, we'll probably be getting both for a while. Would have to monitor both systems for a while, but hopefully, we would be able to kind of wean everybody over to the, to the new system. But we would still be looking at the council communicator inbox. But over time, it would, we'd be able to have it documented better in, in the Asella software. In fact, we already are documenting everything we already have from council communicator into that software just to have it as a test run. So we're moving them over there already.
No, I agree. I just think it is going to be a significant transition, and that we might have to do some education about that through our neighborhoods. I mean, we do that anyway, but I think it could be a significant transition. And then if a council member, we would, you know, we would, don't get me wrong. I was a big advocate for this, and I want to proceed with, with our recommendation. But if I wanted to respond to someone, I would go into the system, I'd log in, and would I just, you know, click on the email to respond? Or would I cut the email address and go to my own, my own email? Like, how would I respond to someone if I wanted to respond individually to them?
Councilmember Cubey, I think probably cut and paste that email address out and put into your own email would be the best way to do that. I would defer to Alex to see what would happen if you were to just click on the email address. I think it would probably come from a 311, it would come from the council communicator response instead of from your personal name. So if you want it to be you who's responding, it should come from your own email address.
Okeydoke.
But I'll, we'll work on that setup.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for moving forward with this. I'm really eager and hopeful. There's so many issues that come up, I think, oh, what about that person that wrote to us two and a half years ago about this very issue? And who is that person? And you're trying to search for that. I think this will make us a more, not just a more efficient city, but more responsive. There is a danger of us losing a little contact as council members, so we're going to have to really, really not be on our guard so much, but really be proactive. And I think it is important to get weekly sort of updates about the major issues coming through. If there's a trend, and maybe even daily. If it turns out there's something that's striking, that is happening over a course of one or two days, we've seen events like that, then we'd want to know, you know, not, not wait for the weekly email. Like the thing with Shady Park, we want to probably know that day, not necessarily the end of the week, right? Because there were so many emails that came in. So, but I really want to give it a go, and I thank you for finding a cost-efficient way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cubey. Let me next go to Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm all about improving our technology. I'm just a little concerned that our residents, it's going to be a little bit challenging for our residents to weed through this, and I'm also concerned about our, you know, our ability to communicate with our residents in a very streamlined manner. So I don't know, if we can go back and, and maybe look at some of those concerns to make sure that we're able to really reach out to our community and how we're going to do that. I guess I would like more specifics about kind of what our plan is to helping our residents maneuver through the new system. So I do appreciate your, your work on this, Keely and Alex, for sure. Just, I guess I have more questions than answers at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Really appreciate it. Let's see, anyone else on council? Any comments or questions on this item? I'll just say something really quickly, then. I really appreciate, you know, Keely, you, and Alex bringing this forward. I know this is a tremendous amount of work when you talk about a system that we've had in place for quite some time. You know, I started on the city council back in 2008, and this was pretty much the system that we've had in place the entire time that I've been part of city government. So anytime you're talking about trying to overhaul something like this for a new system, that's challenging, so I commend you in bringing this forward so quickly. To Councilmember Adams' point, I mean, yeah, I think we just do want to make sure that, that this new system allows for us, and Councilmember Cubey's as well, allows for us to maintain contact with our residents, and that they're not confused by the new system in such a way that it causes them to not communicate as much or to kind of go around the system and maybe use social media channels or other things of that nature to get to us, or having to, you know, obviously, kind of, you know, put everyone into the address line because they just sort of get frustrated. So I think it's important just to, you know, double-check and make sure that the system actually does work the way that it's intended. But I just wanted to say, I mean, I think this is all very strong progress, and I just appreciate all the hard work that you've done on getting this, getting this to the point that it's out. I think it's exciting that we're talking about new ways to be more efficient and to streamline things and to offer our residents a better customer service experience.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments for Keely or Alex? All right. Hearing none. Keely, anything else before we sign off?
No, Mr. Mayor. I think we will go back and think about how we do an education campaign around this, maybe work with Nikki on that. And look at, I do want to get a little bit more information about maybe an easier way for some of you to click on the information in it to immediately send a response email. So we'll look into that, too. And obviously, to Councilmember Cubey's point, if there was something hot going on, we would do more frequent updates than, than weekly updates, and we can figure out a reporting structure for that. But I think the education system understands your point, so we will talk with Nikki and think about how we can get the word out there about how to use this in lieu of the existing system or in transition away from the existing system without hopefully frustrating so much that they go to those social media sites instead.
Sounds good. Thank you, Keely. Really appreciate it. Also, Alex, thank you so much as well for your work. All right. Next up, we have Item 2B, COVID-19 Prevention Strategies Update for City Approved Outdoor Events and Tempe Center for the Arts Performances. And I'm going to go ahead and call upon Deputy City Manager, Rosa Chauasty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. Rosa Chauasty, Deputy City Manager. Before I begin, I just wanted to make sure, Andrew, did you want to start with an introduction?
Yeah, thanks, Rosa. Just real briefly, coming out of ongoing conversations we've been having with mayor and council, updating you on a regular basis about COVID-19 and the city's response to the pandemic, including steps we would take based upon the data that we see, especially locally, that Rosa will be talking about here in a minute, but also, you know, the national trends and, and in particular, our efforts of trying to vaccinate as many people here within our community as possible. During this time, we have been, you know, providing some recommendations, and we've had conversations, including at a recent work-study session regarding special events and some of the things we might require in a special event, depending on the type of special event. So at last week's briefing, there was an interest by a number of council members to have this conversation in light of the latest data and in light of the trends and what we know versus what we may have known a month or so ago. And so we're going to present that, and Keith and his team are also going to be here to talk about what events we have and what experiences we've had, and also what we see coming in the immediate and the more distant future, and to get comments, feedback, and direction from council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. So with me this evening is Greg Reese, our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief. And as Andrew had mentioned, we will be providing a brief overview of our indicators. As you all know, about 10 months ago, our city set out to create Tempe-centric indicators. As you all know, about 10 months ago, uh, our city set out to create, uh, Tempe-centric indicators that helps inform, um, all of you and understanding of the community as far as where we're at with COVID-19 relief. So we will get started with looking at some of our indicators. And just to remind everyone, that is the address for our tempe.gov indicators. And we encourage everyone, our data is being updated all the time, thanks to Dr. Stephanie Dietrich. Um, and with that, I'll just give a brief overview of some of our indicators. Next slide. So one of our lead indicators is all of you are very familiar with, which we treasure in Tempe as we are, uh, the first city to have this amount of data regarding wastewater epidemiology with regards to COVID-19. And I realized today that perhaps the best way to provide the mayor and council some context of this wastewater and where we're at right now with COVID-19 as a lead indicator. As you can see there, and I, I know it looks like a vision test and I say that often, but those bars represent weekly averages of where we're at with COVID-19. And, and just to highlight, since, uh, early August, we have been hovering about the same. But I just wanted to provide the context of the trend analysis. So the highest concentration we've had with COVID in the last, well, since early August, it's still less than 1 million genome copies. And for those who are joining us tonight for the first time, uh, we measure the COVID-19 in our wastewater through genome copies. And it's a fancy word with basically saying is how many, uh, how many fragments of the, of the virus do we see in our wastewater? We measure anything above 5,000 and above. So, and just to give you context, in, in, um, 2020, and specifically, and I will share it with you, April 20, when we first started with COVID wastewater testing, we were at 41 million genome copies. And you all recall, because I'm sure everyone remembers where they were at when we started hearing about what COVID was like in April of 2020. The only other time we have started to see, uh, this year as far as million copies of genome is in February, early February. So the good thing is we've gone through, we're going hopefully through the Delta and we are not seeing the elevated, uh, genome copies that we have seen historically in the last 18 to 20 months. Next slide. And just to remind everyone, these indicators were a think tank created, uh, by a think tank of our fire medical rescue, our office along with Dr. Rebecca Sonnenstein from our county health, who has been instrumental along with Dr. Ralph Holden. So what you see before you is one of the lead indicators, additional lead indicators is cases per 100,000 people by zip code. And unfortunately, we are still in the high category for all four zip codes. But as you can, as you probably know, that our office or, or, um, the chief and I follow this very closely and we're always looking at variations of the high. The good thing is at least we're not in the high 200s. We are now, uh, trending towards the lower half of, uh, the 100. So hopefully we will see us move into substantial very soon. Next slide. Percent positive is something that we talk about. We hear it on the news all the time about what the positive test rates are. A lot more people are testing, so we know that this, while still a strong indicator, we know, um, it might not be as strong because so many people are testing for either attending work or events and other purposes, not just necessarily when they're asymptomatic or feeling or symptomatic. As you can see there, we're high in the three categories of three of four zip codes and substantial in 85284. Next slide. And thanks to the fire chief and his, and his staff who provide these weekly updates. We wanted to look at what our EMS calls for service regarding COVID are, um, in our city. And just real briefly, the last two weeks, we had been hovering about 13 calls for COVID-related probable COVID calls. 13 in the last two weeks. But at the peak, which you see there in probably, uh, early August or mid-August, August 16th, we peaked at 26 calls per that week. And the next slide is something we're all very familiar with. And I want to thank all of you who have been attending some of our vaccine clinics. You all know about the vaccine clinics that we've had. As you can see there, just a dashboard, 16 community events to, to date. And once again, it's 1,600 plus vaccines that we've administered along with 311 rapid COVID tests where people receive 15, the results in 15 minutes. And there was a strategy, uh, behind creating this, um, approach. Dr. Joe Gerald was very instrumental in, um, advising some of the things that he had seen, which is when you couple, uh, COVID testing along with vaccinations, you, the folks who are coming in for COVID tests, who are perhaps hesitant about receiving the vaccine, it's an opportunity during those 15 minutes to perhaps speak to them and, uh, respond to any of the concerns they might have. And we have seen many families decided to take, to get the vaccine due to those important 15 minutes. So, uh, I just want to thank our community partners as are listed here. Moving forward, we are partnering with, um, Cape Borders and the DTA on many of the upcoming events this fall. And once again, I have to thank, uh, Chief Els and his team and, um, Chief Reese and the county for the partnership. Chief, do you have anything else to say regarding the vaccine event?
I do. Can, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you fine.
I, I don't know if I'm able to bring myself up on the screen or, or not, or if that's somebody else that does that.
We hear you loud and clear.
I am loud and clear, but, uh, okay, I don't have, uh, a video, so I'll just go ahead and, uh, give you an update. Greg Reese, Fire Medical Rescue Chief, thank you very much, Rosa and, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have reported out to you over the past year plus and we are continuing to attend weekly meetings provided by anybody who is, uh, giving the latest information. And, um, the fire chiefs in the Central Arizona Life Safety Council are able to sit in every Thursday and attend a meeting that is provided specifically to them by Dr. Sonnenstein, um, and her group at the county. And so today, they did report out some stuff that I found of great interest and communicated with Rosa and thought I would go, go ahead and update you. And some of this information is, um, if you were to go online, you could find it, um, but I will save you that trip. Some exciting stuff happening with, um, as we talk about the vaccination clinics, we are seeing members of our community that are showing up for the booster. Currently, we know that Pfizer has been approved to provide the booster, the booster. There is some very specific information or, or there's some specific criteria to receive the booster shot that I will not go through all of that here, um, but you can find it easily online. And, and if you showed up to one of the clinics, any clinic or, uh, any provider, they would go through that, uh, criteria to see if you do qualify. But some stuff that did come out recently, uh, or as of today, that was reported out by Dr. Sonnenstein, was the FDA is, uh, looking to review on October 14th, Moderna for booster. October 15th will be Janssen or the J and J. October 26th is a, uh, really big day. They will review the kids five through 11 for possible vaccine. And that would come, uh, before Al Halloween as predicted, uh, by Dr. Fauci. So he may have that one correct. Well, one thing about that that, uh, I, I did find to be extremely interesting is that the dosing will be different for the kids and the packaging will be different. And that is all, um, built around safety as, uh, the vaccines are made readily available. That safety mechanism will be in place. The other thing that, uh, was announced today is if indeed, uh, they do approve that Maricopa County announced a, they would be reaching out to the local fire departments to try to team up with the fire departments and local providers to provide the vaccination in the schools and try to vaccinate as many kids as we possibly can to continue to get ahead of that. Another thing was reported today, we still are not at the point that the FDA has approved the mixing, mixing of doses, that is for the booster. Once they are approved, Moderna and Jensen or the J and J, they then would go on and to see and provide us with information on whether you could get a booster, Moderna if you were Pfizer, et cetera. J and J, if you could follow up with a Moderna booster. The one thing that I do want to make clear and that is, uh, though the county is not pushing the boosters at this time because they're still working to meet, um, the first and second or first dose, given if it is Janssen or the J and J, that is really the priority, but they are screening people and providing boosters at events, which we hear, as you can see here, we, we team with the county. They would provide boosters at those events if you do meet the criteria. They do not ask for any proof of age. They don't ask for proof of comorbidity or occupation to qualify. All they ask is that you show them your vaccination record so they can verify that you meet, that meet the six-month timeline and specifically what medication or what vaccine you received on first or first and second dose. One last thing that was, uh, you may have seen in the news here today, and then I'll get to what is going to be provided to county members. And that is the FDA authorized the, uh, Aecon Lab Flow Flex to provide home tests. We know as the Delta variant took off, it was extremely hard for people to get the rapid tests, to even get the rapid tests, let alone be able to get them, uh, over the counter. So by the end of the year, they believe they will produce 1 million tests per month. And by the, uh, going into next year, February 22, 200 million tests per month, which means the tests should be readily available. Binax Now is another home testing kit, which will be available for free beginning October 18th at, um, at the Maricopa County libraries and some of the family resource centers. That information should become available on the, on their website. And each person will be provided two testing kits. So, um, really good news as we move forward and continue to, uh, get as many people as we can vaccinated. And having a home test, I think, will prevent, I hope, prevent people from going out and spreading, uh, the virus. So that is my update. Thank you very much, Rosa, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, Chief. I just have a few more slides to share with the mayor and council. Probably the most important, which is looking at our vaccination rates in Tempe. And, uh, I'm happy to report that the first dose of eligible is 64 and, uh, total vaccinated or at least complete, fully vaccinated is at 59%. Um, and just to give once again context of that, when we started with this campaign, or at least early enough in July, the first dose was 53, July 1st, and fully vaccinated was only at 48%. So we are definitely trending in the right direction and, um, I have to thank the team effort. The next slide shares with the mayor and council the various zip codes and where we're at with vaccination. And actually, this is a slide that was in your packet, um, from October 1st. And you can see that we still were hovering at 85281, which is one of our areas of focus. So our fully vaccinated was, was at 47.7, which is the lowest that we had. And if you go to the next slide, we have updated the slides for you as far as the vaccination. As of today, I am happy to say we are out of the 40s and, uh, we are even looking at 55 or 56% for a first shot in 85281, which you know, has been the focus for us, especially for that age, um, group of 18 to 34 in that area. Um, and 85284 has exceeded all expectations, 81% for, for first shot and 76% for fully vaccinated or fully, um, yeah, fully vaccinated. Next slide. And then these, these, uh, Dr. Joe Gerald has been a great partner with us, providing updates. And this was just one of the quotes that we wanted to share with you because it completely aligns and underscores the work that the city has been doing regarding identifying data that helps us inform, uh, and use of our resources in the best way. And it's not, uh, looking at all the areas of our city, but really focusing on what is, what is, what is the best way to move the middle to vaccinated. So here he gives an example and it's the bit of good news that says basically 4% decrease from the previous week. And obviously this was September 12th. Cases rate, rates remain high among 15 to 24-year-olds, for rest of sure. Your city is focusing on that, that age group and that is our outreach in 85281 and 85282. And then the final slide I wanted to share with all of you, I have to, and I know he's watching tonight. Hoel from Semilla and Hoel has been a partner with us with Equity in Action and Dr. Raquel Gutierrez and others, uh, through Equity in Action have been, um, great advisors as far as how do we reach out to grassroots organizations to partner. Hoel took it upon himself, he wanted to do, create the, uh, the flyer in partnership with the city, promote it on his own, uh, social media pages. He grew up, um, in our city, in this area, the Escalante area. So he was very proud to really partner with the city to, to really promote public health in his, is his community. So thank you, Hoel, and, um, that's one of our updated, um, flyers for an updated vaccine clinic that we have. And with that, Mayor and council, I'll turn it over to you to see if you have any questions or anything that we can help clarify.
Thank you, Rosa. Really appreciate it. Also, thank you, Chief Reese. Let me first turn to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, this is incredible, this, this whole program and how we have been able to reach out to everyone throughout our Tempe community. And the, the numbers are showing it. We've got stats to prove it. I just, I love it. It's a great program. I would encourage us to work with other, uh, cities to help them, share our best practices with them so they can also learn from us and how we've done it. It's just, it's just awesome and, uh, you know, you and, Rose, you and Greg, um, have just done a great job. And I know you have an amazing team behind you, so I'm not, I'm not forgetting them. I just don't want to miss anybody. So please tell both your staffs, great job, and I just really appreciate the hard work. And, and the number, the percentage of, of vaccinations now is really going in the right direction. And I'm, I'm just so proud of our city and everything that we're doing to combat this horrible virus. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me next go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. And I have to say the same thing. I think, um, Chief and, um, and Rosa, I think you guys have done an incredible job with outreach. And as we have heard before, and I think I've heard it from Rosa, that data tells a story. And the story that this data is telling is that we're kicking caboose on this, that you guys are doing a great job in going to and getting to the places where the residents are and, and opening up these clinics and, and working with them. It's not just us having it in one location. You're going all over the, the city. So, uh, it is making a huge difference and, um, kudos to you guys for all that you have done and all the people that have volunteered and have stepped out, um, to be there. It's a, it's an incredible thing to watch the process when you guys get it all going and watch the people sign up. So thank you so much. You've done a great job and, um, I, I'm really, really proud of what we have been able to do and what you guys have been able to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Let me next go to Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So, um, Rosa, thank you for all this good work and Chief, so appreciated. But about the vaccine events, we vaccinated 600, you said? And I mean, there's obviously other people have been vaccinated, just 600 through our council.
Yes.
Is there a hope that we need a certain number, like a certain number of residents vaccinated that will provide some kind of herd immunity? Do we have a goal, a target goal?
Yes, we have talked to Dr. Rebecca Sonnenstein and Greg. Feel free to jump in. Initially, our conversations with her is that the science wasn't there to definitively say it's 70 or 72. But to their best estimate, what they have seen through research is 70 is when you start creating that immunity in your community. We identified 75 because we're overachievers in Tempe. So we know, while we know it's 600 vaccines, but we think what we have focused on is really those who are the hardest to move. So, uh, we have partnered with school districts who are doing their own vaccine, uh, clinics in the schools and the high schools. So as you know, it's available in other places. This has really been the focus on kind of the population that perhaps had either hesitation because of health concerns or, um, their status in, in the state or their, uh, social economic status, things like that. So Greg, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, I, I, I had reported out today, though I will, I will say this, uh, sitting in the county, and, and this is by no means, they're working hard and they're our partners, but it certainly makes me proud of what we are accomplishing here when you look at the numbers in the county and you look at what we're doing here in our community. And so.
what we are accomplishing here when you look at the numbers in the county and you look at what we're doing here in our community and so good things are happening out of these efforts. There's no doubt our numbers are going.
So we listed that the percentage of herd immunity, but in terms of the numbers in Tempe, what does that translate into? We've vaccinated six hundred, but how many how many people in Tempe do we want to vaccinate in the next few months?
Well, and we were looking at the zip code. So we obviously always have an eye to what numbers are looking at. The highest number of needed vaccines for eight five two eight one is about nineteen thousand. It the lowest number is twelve hundred and eight five two eight four. So overall, it's about forty thousand that we still need in our city to get to that seventy five. Now, remember that we set the goal of seventy five. So if we wanted to lower that bar to seventy as Dr. Rebecca Sunshine says that we're used to getting that herd immunity. It would be probably less than forty.
Well, thanks. That's a huge goal and I know it's a huge challenge. I mean, want to make sure that it's equitable and thank you for always using centering equity in your approach. So thank you so much for the work. There's still a lot to be done, I realize, but that doesn't take away from all that has been done. And I look forward to hearing reports as we go. I I know Dr. Joe Gerald and I, we we're also good buddies as you are with Dr. Joe and the numbers have been kind of plateauing, but this, you know, in the last report is actually an increase. We saw increased cases per per week. The the current rate is increasing and it's initial, let's see. I'm looking at the twenty six report. It was a four percent increase from last week. So I know, you know, it's generally plateauing, but there's little increases and decreases along the way. So thank you so much for keeping the data in mind and looking forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you.
Time again, thanks.
Thank you Councilmember QB. Let me next go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Right on. Thank you, Mayor. I just too, I mean, it's already been said, though you guys are pretty dang amazing. You've come together and created an amazing team and I will tell you, I think that we have some of the the best, most aggressive efforts when it comes to vaccination in such a positive way. I I am really, really proud of what you guys have done and continue to do and how you are actually going into our communities and and to where our residents are and nobody is doing it like you're like the fire chief said. So hats off. You guys are awesome. My only question to you is what can I do? What can this council do to help your efforts?
Get vaccinated. Oh.
I already did that.
I'm joking.
And wait, and how do I get those free tacos? I saw that on the flyer.
I think word of mouth. I think that the the great thing about Tempe is we I always say it's big city amenities with the small town feel. And one thing that we talked about early in the pandemic is we heard this through our healthcare officials. The importance of local government building trust and what how that impacts public health. So I think all our jobs, everyone on this call is to get out and and have conversations. I know some of you have had those conversations even with your own family members and have been able to get them to a place where they would feel comfortable. I don't think it's about shaming anyone at all. We have read enough literature that says everything with a carrot, not a stick. Be kind and understanding of people's perspective and the reasons why they're coming from their perspective. That's all we've done. And that's really the conversations that we've been having at all these clinics. So thank you Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I think all your support has been recognized by your residents and we hear it time and time again.
Well, whatever it takes, you got it. Thank you again so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much Rosa. Thank you Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Thank you Chief Reese. Just once echoing all the same comments that have been made so far, just this is just an extraordinary job that you've all done and continue to do on behalf of the city in Tempe and just continuing to promote public health and vaccinations and making sure our residents and business owners and all people who come to visit our city are safe. And so it's great to keep seeing those vaccination numbers tick up. We all have been told and know that that is the best way for us to beat this pandemic and get back to life as normal before the pandemic. So we definitely want to continue to encourage anyone who's watching this to go out and get vaccinated and let's get to that seventy five percent number that we've all talked about. But just thank you so much and a huge kudos to our staff for everything you continue to do to protect public health and all of the people that live and work and play right here in Tempe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, something was on the slide that I just want to leave you with and this is to Rosa, city management, everybody involved. Today on the slide, something that jumped out at the counties was reduce barriers to get a vaccine or a booster vaccine. And so I think that's what's been said here. Thank you so much for helping us reduce the barriers. Because that's the message from the county. So thank you very much for supporting the efforts and and everyone that's involved and has been since we started this a long time ago, the testing. We've reduced the barriers and so thank you for supporting us. Thank you Rosa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it Chief. Thank you Rosa.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, still on this item, I'm going to call up some other members of our staff, our Community Services Director Keith Burke. Our Deputy Community Services Director Brendan Ross and our other Deputy Community Services Director Sean Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keith Burke, Community Services Director. Obviously, you've already mentioned that Sean Wagner and Brendan Ross are with me tonight. I'd also like to put a shout out to Rosa and Greg for all their efforts and creativity hosting these these clinics around the community. It also supports, you know, our many patrons that we see weekly on our facilities within our department. So it's it's a great partnership and even the creativity going to our downtown special events and working with BTA and and continuing the effort to to push for more vaccinations. Hats off to them. Very well done. So we appreciate the opportunity to revisit the conversation about required prevention strategies for large outdoor gated special events and indoor performance at the TCA. The special event task force and TCA staff continue to work with promoters and artists. The CDC CDC recommendations and communications necessary in order to host safe activities outside and inside our city venues and facilities. So you know, I know Sean and Brendan are here to provide a brief update of their respective areas, sharing information about the outdoor special events performances at the TCA. So I'll turn it over to them and hopefully Alex has a presentation up hopefully next slide. I was didn't really see that. Sean, can you pull up the presentation of Alex?
I'd like to, but I don't have that function up. Looks like it's coming. There we go.
All right, there we go. Sorry about that. So yeah, Alex is going on the next slide and Sean will take it from there.
Appreciate it Keith and and again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to revisit. You know, the COVID measures as we move forward tonight and just really quickly, as we do with everything with within the city and all of our services to the community, we base those on our our performance measures. And in this particular case, we're really honing in tonight on the on the quality of life performance measures for the value of our community services, specifically cultural centers and and facilities as well as the value of our special events. We know how much they contribute to our community, whether that be socially, economically or environmentally. You know, we know that these we are wanting to move forward in keeping these performance measures at the the center of of our decisions. Next slide, please. So as you've been receiving in the weekly updates, just want to acknowledge some of the notable events that are coming up and we have everything from from triathlons like the Ironman, including some of our charitable walks, festivals like the Tempe Sesquas Centenary as well as the Mill Avenue Festival of the Arts parades, which we've got a couple coming up, both the Veterans Day Parade as well as the Fantasy of Lights Parade that will be coming up. And in addition to that, we have concerts and other activities that bring our community together. Right now, we have a group of dedicated employees on the Special Event Task Force Committee and this is made up of representatives from different staff from around the city and we continue to monitor the COVID nineteen community transmission levels through that Tempe Indicator website that both Deputy City Manager and Chowste as well as Chief Reeves referenced earlier. So we are very mindful of that and and work through those as well. While also recognizing the efforts of both the local and national event promoters, which you know, we do keep in mind the the Center for Disease Control's Key Prevention Strategies for COVID nineteen for for outdoor events. And those have been included in previous packets, so I'm not going to go over those specifically, but again, that robust community outreach that's been going on has been very instrumental in us bringing these recommendations that we'll present a little later on to you. In addition to that, too, we want to make sure we, you know, we work with our event promoters. And one such is the it's called C three presents and they are a nationwide event promoter. They do our innings festival, which will take place later in February of two thousand twenty two. But right now they're busy doing the Austin City Limits over in Texas, which is a multi-day music festival. And they they've been using a multifaceted approach over there, including the CDC's recommendations along with a proof of vaccine or a negative COVID test within seventy two hours. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Brendan and he's going to talk a little bit more about the Tempe Center for the Arts and their approach.
Thank you for that, Sean. Hello, Mayor and Council Members. I'm pleased to report that TCA has had a really positive response to reopening in the last month and there's been a a smooth rollout of the current COVID policy and I I wanted to acknowledge TCA staff in doing that job with great care for all of our patrons. As you would know, in recent weeks, a range of venues across the valleys have implemented policies that allow for either the proof of vaccination or proof of a negative COVID COVID test as the basis for admittance to venues. And we're also seeing recently too that municipalities are stepping into that same policy space. For example, Scottsdale has announced a new policy allowing for either vaccination proof or proof of a negative test. And also over in Phoenix, the Herberg Herberger Theater Center, companies like the Arizona Theater Company are also implementing the same policy. So there's an opportunity to look at implementing a prevention strategy that align with these sorts of practices across the valley. And I I think by adopting this approach, it would give us a more inclusive and flexible position that enables attendance in alignment with those others. But but also, I I I feel that it would improve our ability to accommodate people with disability and religious exemptions as well as enabling attendance for children twelve years and under and to enable them to be part of the life of TCA. There's a range of events coming up. It's rolling out over October, November, December indoors at TCA. Just to pick out a couple of the highlights, on November twenty, we have the inaugural Indigenous Arts Arizona Festival, which is an all day event where we welcome indigenous artists and communities as part of an all day program of arts activities. And then in mid-December, you may know of jazz singer Diane Reeves and also bluegrass legend Baylor Fleck and his band. And so both of those acts will be coming to the center in the main theater in December. So there's a lot of great events coming up and there's an opportunity here to open up these experiences to the full community by putting in place relevant prevention measures and enabling all of our community to safely participate. Back to you, Keith.
Thank you Brendan. Next slide Alex. So tonight in summary, we are just seeking direction, the recommendation to update the current prevention strategy. Allowing proof of a a negative COVID test within seventy two hours of the event as an additional option to the current requirement of showing a proof of COVID nineteen vaccination. This for entry into large gated ticket outdoor special events and ticketed performances at the TCA. So with that, that concludes our presentation tonight and be open for any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you so much Keith, Brendan and Sean. Really appreciate the presentation. I'm going to look to council members for hands to call upon people. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Great. Hey, thank you, Mayor. Totally appreciate it. And you guys, I mean, that was a really good update. I know we've been kind of just figuring out how to do the best thing to keep everybody safe, but to bring our events back. And it's just really important that, you know, we find a way to be able to you know, kind of get back to some normalcy. I just, you know, I go back and I reflected some of those letters that we got from Tempe Tourism and the Downtown Authority just in regards to how important special events are to the culture of our downtown area. And really the impact that they have on the bottom line on the bottom line of so many of our businesses and how important it is to ensure that, you know, our businesses are successful and so many of them really count on the special event atmosphere. And we are known for that. That's kind of one of the things that we've always done and continue to do and hope that we do in the future. So I really do appreciate the recommendations. I one hundred percent support that we do that. You know, I'm almost, you know, what I say is is consistency. I think it's so important that we have consistency as a city and that we are not being too lenient and we're not being too excessive that we are consistent with our promoters. We let the promoters be the drivers. They know what's working and what's not working. And I want to make sure that we're fair so we're able to come back and and do things safely. We have Arizona State University that is hosting ASU football game with fifty thousand people and they have absolutely no mandates when you go in. And I know many of us were attuned to that with only the mask mandate on the field. And you know, for me, I I look at that as part of what's important to be inconsistent. You can go to the state fair and nobody asks for a vaccination or a negative COVID test. And if the the promoters are are willing to do those, I one hundred percent say yes, let's go ahead and do that and support them in doing that. But I almost am willing to just to to see when we have those outdoor events to be even a little bit more lenient than than that. And then just be consistent with what we're seeing around in the state of Arizona. So with that, Mayor, I hope that helps. That's that's what I would say is I'd like to see us move forward at the very least with the recommendations that we're receiving here tonight, but really seriously consider just having that consistency across the board and doing what, you know, our neighboring cities are doing also, which really is just recommending and supporting those promoters to make sure that their event is as safe as they possibly can without creating any mandates. Thank you.
Thank you so much Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Really appreciate it. Let me next turn to Councilmember QB.
Hear me? Okay.
Yes, Councilmember QB.
Sorry. Yes, I continue to have challenges tonight with my phone. Yeah, just it's interesting. I know there's a case in New York State that is weighing in on the religious exemption rule because you know, even we know Christian Scientists and Jehovah's Witnesses, which groups that can really traditionally oppose medical intervention, they're not opposing vaccine mandates. And so religious exemption is kind of used as a way to, you know, skirt to skirt the the necessariness of of vaccines. We'll have to wait and see how that legally works out. But when you think about the test, the test within seventy two hours, you can easily you could test positive between that seventy two hour time period and the event. So I, you know, I want to keep that. I don't think it's I don't think we should have the test as a way to get in because we're going to allow it's true, we'll get more children in, but right now children are the most unprotected class because they are recommended for vaccines twelve and under. So the children, the ones I worry most about, that's what keeps me up at late up late at night. So I I'm in favor of continuing, of course, the vaccine mandate to use TCA but also not to allow a test to be another way to come into the show because you can still be symptomatic. You can still have that have the have COVID and be transmitting the disease very soon after the test. So I'm not in favor of changing the policy. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember QB. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I hear both the sides of the argument. But I'm probably like my last meeting when I said the consistency has to be something that we have to start doing. Because as you go from town to town or city to city or and state to state, you know, we want to at least be in line with policies that the concertgoers or the promoters are utilizing. If they are utilizing best practices, by all means, totally support it. When it comes to outdoor concerts, so just like the ASU games, just like the, you know, the big venues that are outside and they're not mandating masks. I'm not in favor of mandating masks if the promoter is not, I don't know. Probably their policy on the outdoor events, they're probably not mandated either. But if they are, great, that's that's fine. And it's up to the individuals to wear a mask or not wear a mask. So I think Councilmember Arredondo Savage kind of said it and and it's kind of what I'm saying from last week is consistency has to happen. And I think what the frustration is with a lot of people going through COVID fatigue right now. And what are we doing? What can we do? How can we do it? Listen, people are doing things. Sporting events are happening. Stadia are full. Places are game packed. We're plateauing on the COVID cases, although Although we're probably high, we're still plateauing. We're not going any further. With our wastewater tests and how we're seeing our trends, we are starting to see that potential of things going down in a certain way. I'm not saying let's not totally let it go, but when ASUs has 50,000 people in the stands, Cardinals, same thing, outdoor events like the state fair, and other cities doing other things when it comes to outdoor events, and no policies are being implemented, I think for less confusion, to benefit our merchants, to get us back to normalcy, I think that it's going to be up to people's opinion on wear a mask or not wear a mask on those events. Indoor events, I probably would say COVID test, as other venues possibly prescribe the same thought on an indoor event. So I would categorize those two things separate, and I think that definitely we need consistency across the city and across the state. So there you are.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Really appreciate it. Any other council members, comments or questions? Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So I'm looking over the conclusion and the summary from the presentation, and I'm okay with the addition to the COVID testing, because I do think that that is a good thing to do. There are some events, I mean, I looked over at the events that they had that are coming up at TCA. It would be nice to be able to not only go, but include a family if you wanted to go. So I support that, and I supported even more after looking at the presentation that we just had regarding the COVID testing, what we're doing, where our numbers are at. So I'm really glad that we had that presentation also, because that helped to make my decision on this. But the other point, thing I wanted to say, that I am so glad Brendan Ross is here, and I'm glad he's on, he's with us tonight, and I'm glad he's at TCA. So welcome, Brendan.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, comments on the proposed policy? With that, I guess I will make a comment myself on it. I support the staff's recommendation on this. I supported it when it was first brought up quite a few weeks back, and think it's the right thing. I think a lot of the councils talked about this. Couple of things, obviously, one with what we are doing in terms of the vaccinations and all of the incredible work we're doing with our school districts and community partners. We are doing a great job, and I just once again commend our staff for everything that we've done to help get more and more people vaccinated. At the same time, I want to make sure that we are doing what we can do to assist our businesses and our merchants as well, and trying to make sure that we are maintaining a level of consistency across the board. When I look at a lot of the local music venues, that the one slide that was up, a lot of the local music venues that are doing outdoor shows, but even mostly indoor shows, are doing the vaccination and negative test within 72 hours, including staples like the Marquee Theater. And I know that graphic was even a little bit older, and since then, the Yucca Tap Room, which is probably our most iconic music venue, I would say it is our most iconic music venue in all of Tempe, and one of the most iconic in the entire valley. They've also since implemented that policy at the Yucca Tap Room in Tempe, and the Yucca Tap Room up north, in northern Arizona. I also feel that it's, from a consistency standpoint, I agree that it's the right thing to do, because one of the challenges we will face, I mean, all of these public policy decisions are tough, because you're balancing public health with also trying to make sure you maintain your economy. And one of my things is, when you have a relationship with a concert or a promoter or something, if we happen to lose that concert, it becomes very, very hard to get it back. If we develop a reputation for being a lot more challenging to work with than a lot of our other surrounding cities, I know a couple were mentioned, Phoenix, Scottsdale, definitely two cities that we regularly compare ourselves to when it comes to policies and procedures and practices. Once you lose an event, you have a really hard time getting it back, and it might take years to begin to change that promoter or that event's perception of the city. Also, I really appreciate Brendan's comments about the Herberger, because when I look at the Herberger, I think a lot about the Tempe Center for the Arts, and a lot of the programming that we offer and the audience that we're attempting to appeal to. And that's also the policy that they're using, which is the proof of vaccination or the negative test result. So I want to make sure that we are practicing some level of consistency across the board, so we continue to, not only protect public health, which we know is obviously paramount in the minds of all of the members of this council, but at the same time, make sure that we're protecting our local economy and our local business owners, and that we're preserving who we are as a community. We are a very events-friendly and events-heavy city. We know a lot of our business owners and our merchants rely on those events to come here. And frankly, I've seen a lot of people over the last few weeks, who before talked about not going out to shows and concerts, whether it be indoor or outdoor, really saying, hey, this has been challenging, and it kind of sometimes feels a little bit weird to step back outside and begin to go to a lot of these things for the first time in over 18 months. But they were really excited about beginning to regain some sense of normalcy in their lives. And so I think that's also critically important for all of us. So I won't go on any longer, but I once again just want to commend the staff for all the hard work that they've done with these vaccinations and getting that uptick to about 64%, which is only about 11% away from our stated goal of 75%. We are that close, and I know that we can get there as a community, but also making sure that we do maintain that consistency and support our local economy and our businesses who really do rely on these events, and frankly, provide outlets for our residents to make sure that they can enjoy things still from a very safe basis. So I wanted to say, I do support the policy recommendation to add the test requirement as an option. Let me go back to Councilmember Arredondo Savage for more comments.
No, thank you, Mayor. I mean, you said it really eloquently. Thank you. I mean, you covered the whole basis from about losing events, the importance of economic development, the culture of downtown, and everything, and I couldn't agree more. So thank you for that. I definitely agree. And it sounds like, I feel like we've got that consensus to follow the recommendation of our staff. But what I would ask, too, beyond that, is for Keith Burke and his team, as things change and evolve, that they feel comfortable and free to bring it back, so we can ensure that consistency. If things start to change and we need to look at that policy again, I would definitely ask Keith Burke and his team to feel free to bring that back. And so we have the opportunity to address it, so we can continue to be successful.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I completely concur with that. I think, as you've said before, our staff does an excellent job of being flexible and being on top of things, and constantly monitoring and tracking data when it comes to hospitalizations or infection rates or vaccination rates. So absolutely, Keith, for you and your team, if something changes, and you feel the need to come back to the council to get further direction, of course, we are happy to get it on the agenda immediately, because as we've talked about, public health is paramount to our community and to this council, but obviously, making sure that we are supporting our business community and our local merchants is also paramount as well. So if you need to come back at any point, we would love to have you back.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the direction. We'll go back and work with staff and our event promoters, and give them an update to our policy. So and we'll keep moving forward and then bringing them safely to the community, as well as the performances to the TCA.
Thank you, Keith. Really appreciate it also. Once again, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Brendan, as well. Really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Next up, item 2C. We've got here, future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Do any council members, by show of hands, have anything they'd like to add to a future Councilmember QB.
Yes, I believe, I don't think I see it on the agenda coming up, but I thought we were supposed to have a report back from Carla and from Judy about changes to some of our campaign finance reform ordinances, that we had to adapt them and tweak them a bit. So I'm not sure when that's happening, but just a reminder that we agreed to bring it back.
Absolutely. I definitely remember that, Councilmember QB. Thank you for bringing that up. Let me ask Judy or Carla, do you have any update on when you know that's going to be coming forward for a future issue review session?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Judy Baumann, City Attorney. We can certainly have that in the November meeting for council consideration.
Sounds good. Thank you. And I believe that's November 4th, Madam City Attorney?
I believe you're right. I think that's correct. We would have it first at a work-study session for your input, and then we could put anything that is directed on the regular council meeting agenda to file. Thank you.
Sounds good. Let Councilmember QB know that's going to be on the front end of November, not the back end of November. So we will definitely make sure to get that on, Councilmember QB. Thank you. Any other council members, any other items that they'd like for a future issue review All right. Hearing none, I want to move forward here to item number three, which is the call to the audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under Section 4, Committee of the Whole Items on this work-study session agenda. And of course, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Is there anything listed here for Madam Clerk for a call to the audience?
Mr. Mayor, there are no items listed, and we did not receive any additional cards at this time.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kara. Really appreciate it. Then we'll move on here to item 4A, items ready for City Council direction or status update. We don't have any this evening. Next up then is item 4B, Council Committees in Progress, Updates as Needed. We, of course, have the Human Services and Community Safety Committee, Sustainable and Livable Communities, and Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality. Are there any updates that council members would like to give on any of these committees? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that portion of the agenda and go to item number five, Mayor's Announcements and City Managers' Announcements. I'll start first. I've got an announcement here. It's a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our whole region. Through leadership of the Maricopa County Association of Governments, has made it a priority to bring awareness to this issue. Right here at home, we are taking the issue of domestic violence even further when it comes to awareness. Back in March of this year, the council was presented with a plan to bring a family advocacy center online right here in Tempe. And during those budget discussions, right before the end of the previous fiscal year, the council prioritized funding for this in the capital improvements budget, for this to become a reality in this current fiscal year. We are really grateful for the proclamation with Arizona State University and our ability to enhance services for victims and survivors by providing a safe, convenient location for those in need of services. The center is expected to open in early 2022, which is right around the corner. A special thank you to the members of our Family Justice Commission for being champions of these efforts, as well as the team from CARE7, Tempe Fire and Medical Rescue, and our Tempe Police Department for your dedication in providing quality community service to domestic violence calls for service. We appreciate the work that all of you do. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation that I've got here, which reads, "Whereas the City of Tempe, the City of Tempe Human Services Department, Tempe Police Department, and Tempe Fire Medical Rescue are proud to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas the City of Tempe and our CARE7 Victim Services Team offer a wide range of trauma-informed services to ensure that victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and other related crimes are given the support that they need. And whereas the City of Tempe is broadening services by establishing a family advocacy center in collaboration with Arizona State University and other community partners, which will be the gold standard for serving victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and other crimes. And whereas the City of Tempe will connect individuals and families to needed city and community resources, such as medical exams, emergency housing, counseling, and if requested, assistance navigating the criminal justice system. And whereas the Tempe City Council fully supports a centralized center to serve the entire community, while recognizing the need for an accessible, safe, and healing environment for those in need in our community. And whereas the City of Tempe and CARE7 continually assess and enhance services for domestic violence victims and those in our community impacted by this epidemic. Now therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." With that, I'm going to turn now to our City Manager, Andrew Ching, to see if he has any announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I have no announcements.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. With that said, item number six, our next meeting date is October 21st, 2021. And with that, we are adjourned. Council, we need to switch back over to finish an executive session. But thank you so much, everyone, for watching, and have a great weekend.